Followed by Alderman Saucy. Please stand.
Hello. Lauren, as we gather here today as a community, we are faced with important decisions which will guide the future of our town. We ask that you grant us patience to listen to each other as we seek a reasonable path forward, that you grant us wisdom to allocate our resources wisely towards shared goals for Abita's residents, and that you grant us courage to act upon the knowledge available to make wise choices to bring about a flourishing town for generations to come. We ask that you soften our hearts so that we may all act locally, nationally, and globally to foster a more peaceful world. And finally, we offer thanks that we are all able to make our lives in the beautiful town of Abita Springs, where nature performs miracles. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, tonight is a...
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
You always have to open that and share it when it comes to the plan.
Okay.
Okay. You open this and share it when it comes to the plan with you. Here's what you do.
Okay, thank you.
Don't hide on them because I need that.
Okay. All right. Tonight is a... We have a kind of a special night tonight. Tonight, we're announcing our Volunteer of the Year and also the Citizen of the Year. So I'm going to approach the lecturing and I'm going to introduce y'all to the Volunteer of the Year, followed by the Citizen of the Year. This year, it's an honor to recognize someone whose dedication, kindness, and community spirit truly embody the heart of Abita Springs. Ms. Cindy Davenport is an active member of Keep America Beautiful, Keep Abita Beautiful and America, and the Abita Springs Garden Club, and she's always among the first to volunteer for any town event. With her sweet and genuine disposition, she's the kind of person who rolls up her sleeves, jumps right in, and does whatever it takes to make our town a better place. It is with great appreciation that we present the 2025-26 Volunteer of the Year to Ms. Cindy Davenport. You'll come forward. I've got a little something to read here, and then we'll make some presentations. The Abita Springs Volunteer of the Year, 25... 2025-2025-26, there we go, presented to Cindy Davenport. "In recognition of your dedication and superior service to our community, the heart of a volunteer is not measured in size, but by the depth of the commitment to make a difference in the lives of others." And this is a quote from Deanne Hollis, and it is presented to you on behalf of Mayor Daniel J. Curtis. Congratulations. We'll be having some pictures as well. Now I'll call up Ms. Denata Henry.
Not to be controversial at the very get-go, but I believe this is for you and this is... Oops, sorry.
Okay. I just followed directions.
This is the haunted water drop. Yeah. We pass along. And I know because it's lived with me for the past year. Thank you for your understanding. All right. So yeah, I'm Denata Henry, and it has been my privilege to be the Citizen of the Year this past year. I had a lot of fun at the Pushmo Parade. That was a blast. And tonight, I have the very special honor of bestowing the... This wonderful... We call it the haunted water drop, but it's the Abita Water Drop. Lovely piece. And also, our great appreciation to the Abita Springs Citizen of the Year for 2025-2026, Ms. Kay Redd. So just a little bit about Kay. So we know that Kay is not entirely a local by her lovely accent, which many of us are well familiar with, but she is originally from England and emigrated to the United States 50 years ago and has been our librarian in Abita Springs for 24 years. And that's meant a lot to me because my children grew up with you, as have many of our children and many of our families that have had a long and loving relationship with Ms. Redd at our Abita Springs Library. Some of the... And also, a lot of people are extremely impressed that you were in the Royal Marines, which makes you seem like a particularly paradise. And you were the Secretary to the Commanding Officer for incoming recruits. Wow, that's an adventure of another kind. Yes, exactly. So... And I do just want to... Also, I wanted to just point out that this recognition or the decision to nominate you as our Citizen of the Year was made by the five previous Citizens of the Year. So we really thought long and hard about this, about who we felt were just really influential members of the community, of which we have many. But we were so aware of how much you have brought to our families in terms of just learning, resources, giving very special attention to particular patrons, being aware of their likes and their needs. Martha Groening was just telling a story about how you would say like, "Oh, I put some things on your list," you know, "added some things that I knew you would like," even before she knew she would like them. So things like that you've always done for us in such a specialized way. Your support of the master gardeners and their work around the grounds of the library. You have run the library book club for over 22 years and have just been such an incredible support to so many of us. And just we're deeply appreciative of that. So I am passing along this magic water drop to you. It is rather heavy. Be careful. And yeah, I think another round of applause for Kay.
Kay, it's been an absolute pleasure to come into work every day. I just love my job. But I also want to acknowledge the people I've worked with in the past. And I've got Beth and Virginia at the back, and I have Yonsek, who has worked with me now. They have enhanced the library system. My son and his partner Tiffany have just moved back to Mandeville. So you all... When I first came here, Shaun and his family lived in Arkansas, so I didn't have any family. But the staff and the patrons became my family, and I count you as my friends. So it's a great honor, but it takes a village to make the Abita Library what it is. So thank you, everybody over there. Thank you.
And you also... These are yours?
That's mine.
Along with... And we're gonna take some pictures.
Yeah.
And I think we have some flowers for you as well. So if you want to just put your stuff down here and just take some photographs.
If all the previous Citizens of the Year who were in attendance could come up for a group photo with Kay, that'd be great.
All right, I gotta go ahead. All righty. As they take their pictures in the back, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward. We do have another announcement this evening. Mr. Sheldon Carr is here with us, and he will be filling the unexpired term of Planning and Zoning Commissioner Lex LeBlanc. And Sheldon would like to say a few words. So Sheldon, if you would come up for us.
Hello, my name's Sheldon Carr. Sorry, but my name's Sheldon Carr. Just was told a few days ago, we joined the Planning and Zoning Committee and moved to Abita Springs in 2022, just before my first son was born. Now I have a three-year-old and a four-month-old, and also my wife. Can't forget my wife. I do have an associate in computer aided drafting and design, which I think was one of the reasons why kind of helped me maybe join into this committee. I do currently review restaurant designs and am familiar with construction, building, things like that. Very, very heavy with, like I said, with drafting and things like that, budgeting and stuff as well. Not sure how far into biography I should go, but those are the handful of things that I thought would be a good thing to speak on.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. I do...
Thank you.
One thing too, this is probably one of the first time I've really volunteered in a public aspect, so it is quite interesting. It sounds like it's gonna be fun. Very, very excited to learn as much as I can and also be a little voice for the community also as well.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Now I'm gonna call on... Under the mayor's announcements, I'm gonna call on Angie and Taylor to talk to y'all a little bit about the upcoming Halloween activities.
So this year's event is gonna be a little bit different than we've done in the past. We have decided to make it a town-wide celebration for Halloween this year. So we will be closing off Level Street from the traffic circle to Cypress, I believe, and then the side streets from Main to Grover. Grover, Nor Grover, Grover or Main will not be closed. But anyway, we will encourage trick-or-treating on the close-off streets and whatever other streets you'd like to go to. We will be providing some, as much lighting as we possibly can to make it a little bit safer for the kids. So we'll have them trick-or-treating in the residential area, and we will encourage them to come down to Town Hall, where we will have some games and some entertainment-type things set up. We will have some trunk-or-treat in the park, in the field across. And then the fire department, as well as some other stops on the way to the Trailhead Park, where they will be... There will be a haunted house that we have a ton of volunteers that are working on tirelessly to make amazing. It's gonna be really fun. We have the Stumps playing, Six to Nine, and there will be some other activities in the park as well. We are encouraging everybody who lives on Level or on the side streets or on Main or Grover to please try to participate. We understand that candy is kind of expensive this year, but maybe something else could be given out. We are prob... We are going to encourage people to decorate. We're gonna have a little check-off for these kids who are going trick-or-treating to maybe cast their vote for the best decorated house. We have one on Level that's already almost there, so y'all have some catching up to do. But we're hoping that this will be a very successful event this year and can get even bigger and better with the participation with businesses and homes and groups. And it's gonna be a fun, fun night. So we hope everybody can come out, too.
We're also hoping to put out a map, kind of like we do for garage sales. So if you are on that route that's gonna be closed off or even right outside of that route, we're gonna be posting on our social media link to sign up. So we'll put out a list of participating houses. And then there was some discussion of doing a sort of scavenger hunt. So we'll have certain houses where the kids can go, check off, you know, that they've been to those houses, and then bring them back to us at the park. That way, we get everybody involved. We've been in touch with local businesses to be involved as well, to kind of bring it all together and have like that whole-town block party feel.
Yeah. So... And we're still looking for some donations for pumpkins and art supplies and hay. So if you know anybody, like candy, pumpkins, hay, that kind of, you know. So all right, thanks, guys.
All righty. Thank you very much. I'm sure many of y'all have seen the stunning new murals around town created by our incredibly talented local artist Dave Kelsey. The most recent installation is on Highway 36 going towards Covington, on the fence at the school. And if you get an opportunity to ride by there and take a look at it, I think it's... It hearkens back to an earlier time in Abita Springs. I think it's very natural. I think it's very Abita-ish. It's reminiscent of a lot of the signage that you can still see on some of the buildings in New Orleans, that they're doing everything in their power to preserve because there's not too many of them left. And we're just very lucky to have this gentleman and his wife that are in town and were able to do these murals. So they have one at the... Let's see, the Abita Springs Cafe, Mama Dee's, the back of the building facing the brew pub with a seat where children and adults can take pictures. And then now also this very welcoming sign right coming into our town of Abita Springs by the school. So if you have an opportunity, drive by there and take a look. They have given generously of their time and talent, and we are deeply grateful to have them in the town of Abita Springs. Dave is well-known in the film industry as a set designer and painter, and so he is extremely qualified. And I think he made the sign on the school look exactly like it would have back in the time of people traveling over from New Orleans, on the ferries. Also, law enforcement has been actively stopping golf cart drivers now. So I think it's important that we go back and kind of look at our golf cart ordinance or draft a new one to be able to regulate that so that we can enforce it correctly. The Gozy Family Land Donation. The Gozy Family has graciously donated a parcel of land of Danny Park to the town. This contribution will support floodplain management and also add a green space for us. A resolution to adopt the... Accept the donation will be presented at the October 21 meeting. Tomorrow, a meeting regarding land use and rezoning for Central and East Abita will be held tomorrow at 5:30 PM. Community input is encouraged and appreciated. And if you go on our website, there is a map, and the blue section will show you what areas will be impacted with this discussion tomorrow. The Event Pintin Property. We understand the process has been delayed due to mapping issues. Ms. Vett is working with the surveyor on finalization of the necessary details, and we hope to move forward on this exchange here very quickly. The Abita Springs Opry, Saturday, October 17. Great music for the town and the community. They usually do have some music out on the front porch. So if you're strolling around town, stop by, listen to a little bit of music. And if you're in for the Opry, the Opry will start soon thereafter. Abita Fall Fest. It was voted the best Gambit Fest of 2024. Here we are in 2025. It starts Friday, this Friday, the 10th, from 5 till 10. And then Saturday, the 11th, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, with wrapping up with Amanda Shaw and the Cute Guys, I believe, is gonna be the final act. But you can go on to the Abita Brew Pub website, and it gives you all the details, all the bands. I do know, I've noticed one band from the past, my past, the Iguanas will be playing. So this should be a really nice, fun fall fest. And we'll knock on wood that the weather stays nice and it is less humid and hot. But we can always hope. All right, now we're gonna move on to a public hearing, and I will read this to you. Instrument 2025-09-001, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the Town of Abita Springs to adopt the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve Phase 1 of the Abita Meadows Plan Unit Development. Final plat zoning and associated zoning district located on Highway 36 east of Abear Road, in accordance with the development agreement previously approved by ordinance number 485. This approval is pursuant to the PUD final approval process outlined in Sections 9-803 and 9-804 of the Town of Abita Springs Code of Ordinances. Notwithstanding that these sections have since been repealed and reserved, they remain applicable to this PUD under the terms of the original agreement. All righty. And Leanne, I believe we can open this up for a public hearing. Anyone on the council have anything to say? From the gathered audience here of townsfolk? Yes, we would be amiss if you didn't say something. Thank you, Stuart.
Yeah, I'm Stuart Eastman. I live on Maple Street, for those who haven't heard often enough.
Oh, yeah.
There are... There have been a great number of steps in this. Every time an objection is raised, it's always, "It's too late or it's too soon." But this is not a matter of just checking boxes on an outline that was designed by one of the previous appointees in the... In planning and zoning. It's about what's good for the town. And you, as our representatives, the Aldermen, should be thinking each time one of these comes up, but this is probably one of your last chances, whether this plan is good for the town and whether it is a good map. And we haven't seen the map discussed at all in a very long time. But some of the things that are wrong with the map, the principle of the PUD, even the old law, was to have a balanced community with the commercial and green space all balanced throughout. And this particular map has the commercial off in a corner where it's not gonna be walkable, and it has the green space undeveloped swamp down at the other end. And it violates all that. But it also violated the laws of cutting trees when it was clearcut, and they got by that because one of the appointees told them they could. But that's not really authorized by law. But one of the main things that I'd like to bring up that I don't think has been brought up before is the entire design of this map is based on Harrison being extended to 36. Without Harrison having been extended, there's only one way in and out. We've already seen what kind of danger and disaster that can cause in some of our smaller subdivisions. Here, we could have up to 500, well, 390 homes, however many people that would work out to, with only one exit to and fro because Harrison Avenue has not been extended. And it doesn't really look like it will be. It's been disapproved several times by the highway folks. So this is gonna be a bad map. I mean, specifically, it's a bad map even if they put in some kind of PUD there because it only has the one exit in and out. It is bad for drainage, and it does not fulfill the purposes of the original... I'm not talking about changing it, but the original PUD ordinance. So I urge you to take this opportunity to just say no. I mean, this is enough. Make them go back. If they really want a PUD there, design something decent. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Anyone else? Seeing none?
The board.
The board, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I... I'm happy to see this coming up. This has been a long time getting here. I think this development's actually gonna be good for the town. First off, it's not in town. It's out of town. And a lot of the questions were about the utilities for this particular thing. And I think, I think with the slow start that they're gonna have, I think we can keep up with them on utilities. We're gonna get the gas line out there and the sewer line out there, and I think we'll be able to handle it pretty good. Traffic? I'm not so sure about traffic because if I was going to Mandeville or Slidell from there, I'd go out 1088. I wouldn't try to come through Abita. So there might not be as much traffic as we think. So... And I know that this developer has developed some really nice developments in the past, done some good work. I think they actually did... What is that one out here on 36th? Not the Abita Loop, but the other one. They actually did that one. And so I would ask everybody to really kind of help them come along. We can... I think the town can really be benefited by this. So just my opinion. Thank you.
I'd just like to make sure that people who are watching or sitting here today understand that what is being requested of this board is the approval of the zoning for the PUD, not the approval of the plat, which happens at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The plat has things that were still being worked on, and it has things that get specifically recorded in relationship to the utilities, et cetera. This meeting is solely on whether or not we approve or deny the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the zoning for the PUD.
It says on... It says on the actual instrument, just to clarify, that this, whereas the both the final plan unit development plat and subdivision plat are necessary to allow the sale of lots in Phase 1 of the future home buyers, where one here is it saying that we're only approving the zoning, not the plat itself?
Do you guys like to explain that?
That's slide 26 and 27.
This board does not approve a plat.
15 is his answer.
If you look on the plat itself, in the box in the center, the first, let me find the point that I was going to be, you can find it right here. Can you see that? So, look at that here. Final plat, this one plat is made in purpose of showing the proposed layout of this development. It is not intended to create subdivision lot shown hereon. This plat shall not be used for the sale or convey of property shown hereon.
Correct. And as I discussed with Kristen today, this board approves the zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission approves the plat. So we're, I just want to be clear on that because if there's anything else, modifications that need to be made to the plat, that may happen before Planning and Zoning Commission approve the plat, which may be in the 30th of October, is my understanding?
They don't approve anything. The board approves.
They approve the subdivision of property.
They recommend it.
They recommend the, to us to approve the zoning, and then they approve the actual subdividing of property.
Right.
That's the process by the law.
Well, as for a zone, I, I think this map, at least as it's drawn, which I wouldn't imagine that the final would be any different, I think it's, it scares me to death. You're not going to find a more pro-business person than me, but this doesn't exist in a vacuum. This is going to have an impact on traffic, a big one. 59 is already a parking lot every single morning, and it's going to be a worse one. And then it'll make 36 a parking lot, too. And not to mention the drainage issues and so forth. And then if we're approving this to say, start selling this to home buyers, they can't even flush a toilet if they bought something tomorrow. So I, I don't understand how we're not getting the cart before the horse here when we don't even have a way to move the sewage yet. It's my feeling.
I'm going to, Mr. Alderman Boudreaux just said that this place is not a part of Abida. Was it not annexed into the town? So it is part of Abida. It does only have one way in and out. So every car that goes in and out, every truck that goes in and out to build it, is going to come through Abida unless the parish can build the other road in about six months. Just wanted to clarify that because it is in Abida.
Okay. Can I answer that? Yeah, you're, you're correct. It is, it is annexed. I mean, it's, it was outside of town, now it's annexed in. So that's, you are correct. It is part of Abida. And we do have a legal responsibility for it. And so I think we, we need to proceed to go ahead with it because we do have legal responsibility for that.
Well, what about the legal responsibility to the present residents as opposed to the ones who are going to come in? And what I've heard about it is the drainage situation, it might be solved for them by becoming a little bill, but it won't be solved for a lot of people in damn Abida. Only way out is southland, and I've already got issues. So what is that going to do to the rest of us? Who's holding up our legal rights?
Yeah, I don't think it will affect you at all.
Well, great. I'll call you once something happens.
Please do.
Sissy Wiggins, Abida. I understand that you want to protect the legal rights of people who may move here. What about my rights to have a sewage-free yard? I still don't understand how this is all going to work. If these gets, start getting connected to town sewer, it's going to end up in my yard.
Where is that manhole in your yard? Where is that manhole in your yard?
Why are you, it's not, 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 it's[1018.94]
Is so that they can look at the different metrics of, you know, how many lots, does the lot size match the zoning? Um, in this case, there is a very specific agreement that the town many years ago entered into with this developer to tell them how many units that they will be allowed to have. This has been in the courts for many years and we have been told by the courts multiple, multiple times that we must follow the development agreement. Our way of protecting our citizens is to make sure of the pace of the development and to make sure of the restrictive covenants so that we don't allow for toilets to flush until systems are in place. So that's the purpose of the restrictive covenants as they're written. Um, we are frantically looking for funding to hold up our end of the development agreement, which was agreed to by this town many years ago. And we have been told by the courts that we must abide by. Therefore, we have, um, in the past, I don't know if anybody has been watching the past several, um, council meetings, but we've been talking about approving, uh, the ability to look for government grants and loans and apply for them in order to try to get the sewer system in prior to the first, um, house being given its, uh, certificate of occupancy. So we are trying very hard to protect the existing residents of Abida. We all live here too, right? But we are also having to find a solution to the situation that has been ongoing for many years and that we have been told in no short way from the courts that it is our responsibility to provide for that. So we're doing the best we can. That's, that's all I can say.
It goes back to the same question. Who's going to pay for that? All those improvements and any loans we have to get to do this work?
Well, we may be lucky to be able to get grants or to, we have applied for loans that may have a percentage of forgiveness, which means the federal government will be giving it to us out of all of our tax dollars. And if not, we, the citizens, including future citizens of Abida, um, will pay back any loan that the town has to take out, just like we do for any infrastructure improvement. So that's.
Right, but it's not caused by a ridiculous situation like we're in now.
The town agreed to a cooperative endeavor agreement years ago.
Nobody asked me before they did. Anyway, that's not the, that's not the point. That's not the point I'm trying to make.
We want to solve it, is the reality. And we want to do it in a safe way that keeps everybody safe and in a, in a measured way that says, okay, you can't build
Right, and who's.
Houses that next year, you have to build in accordance. And then if we are able to uphold our end of the deal, I believe that the, um, loans and the grants that we have applied for, we have a better chance of receiving because what it looks like is we're following our word as a town after entering into the cooperative endeavor agreement. We have to uphold our end of it. That's the reality of it. And nobody's going to help us if we're not upholding our end.
Okay, who's going to be watching these people to be sure they're doing what they're supposed to do?
Well, that's the purpose of inspections and, you know, the, um, building department and the town, of course. I mean, that's why you have to have multiple, I don't know, although we don't have any angels that are going to fly down. We have to do the work ourselves.
Maybe we could find a few.
In, in our system.
And by the way, I don't want the mayor to go to jail either.
Right.
I don't think, it's not.
We're trying to do the best we can.
It's not his fault by any means and he shouldn't have to pay a price for it either, any more than the rest of us.
Well, I appreciate that.
Ms. Wiggins.
Well said, Alden.
Ms. Wiggins, one of the solutions, you talked about connecting to the town sewer. One of the solutions is, is connecting out there, going directly to our plant so it would bypass the town sewer completely. And Ms. Root, who's going to pay for this? The $5 million grant that we received to rehabilitate our plant? Um, the same people may be paying for this. But as Regan Contois, uh, Alden Contois mentioned, when we went for the loan, thanks to, um, Danette and Leanne, they were able to get it in time to be eligible for 49.9 or 49.5 percent forgiveness. Was it, was it five or nine, whatever it is? So nearly 50% forgiveness and we are applying for both. Capital outlay, which would be no charge to the town, and we're also applying for a loan. We'll take a combination of the both. So we're, we're working every angle we can.
Since, excuse me, since the subject of the water and drainage came up.
Excuse me, she's speaking. She was, she was trying, she was trying to answer my question. She, you're done, okay. Go ahead.
Um, the water, even though the, the water drainage and runoff is a problem, especially the runoff was not dealt with originally. It just was ignored. It was brought up and complaints from the neighbors, but it was never dealt with. That's why we have all these steps because someone has to say no sometime. But the water that is going to be running off there, you might think that's way off at the east side of town. But that runs into a stream which then runs through town and then goes out to where Ms. Wiggins lives, I believe. And so the, the, in other words, the drainage from there is not just affecting them. It's not their own drainage. It's going to affect the drainage for the entire town. And eventually it'll go across, uh, the newly switched Devett's property area where we're going to have a new ditch. But that ditch is already leading to an area that floods. So the flood is just going to make the flooding come back, back up faster and more. Um, so when you're thinking about the water and drainage and runoff, I'd like you to remember that it's the whole town that's being affected. It's not just the eastern part.
Now, if I could say something, we were speaking to our town engineer today. Uh, St. Camity Parish is, is currently working on a parish-wide drainage survey. Because we're, we're not the only people with a problem. But we're not an island and it's going to flow to the river, like you said. But if, if there's damming going towards either the Abida River, the Jufuckta River, or, or going out into Lake Punch Drain, that's, that's what we have to do. It's kind of like having a pipe that's plugged up. We need to blow the pipe out to get the water to, to drain. But it, it has to be an overall, and so that's what they're looking at. We're trying to make sure that we're part of that plan. To answer your question, that we're part of that plan to be able to have them at their expense look into the drainage of our area. We did have a drainage survey done, Leanne, I believe, or Danette, uh, back in 2010, something like that. That the, the, the original drainage plan that came to us through, um, Mr. Monet. What year was that?
Well, it was the final systems plan that was developed by the engineer.
Uh huh.
And was approved by principal engineering.
Okay.
I'm not sure Jean Tippett, or maybe the one who approved the drainage plan because those tasks were segregated.
Okay.
Maybe Mr. Henning could elaborate on it. I don't know if you have any better regulation of that. Remember Jean Tippett was involved in certain aspects of approving that final systems plan and Andre was involved, I believe, in the sewer aspects. Is that right?
Yeah, I recall Andre Monet was in charge of the sewer and the water, I believe, and then Jean Tippett over developed the rest.
But that was quite something, I guess.
Right, but at, at least we have a start. Uh, so hopefully we can, we can piggyback on top of the parish to hopefully, you know, maybe get moved up a little bit on the list. So we'll see. We're, we're like, like everyone is set up here. We're working every angle that you can think of to try to make everything work the best that we can. Yes, ma'am. Uh, Captain Mike, would you, would you take that back there for her, please? He walks fast.
You were great, thank you, sir. I just wonder if building, the way that building practices are used, you know, doing all the fill and that kind of building, why not have, if people built with the land they have, raised houses, pier, pier and the like, just fill where they need to for streets, driveways, it would probably help a lot, I would think. You know, I think we have a land use problem, big time, and in this parish especially.
Okay.
You know, we've been developed to death.
I'd like to say one more thing. Uh, when you look at the building schedule, the earliest, the earliest that this would affect the, the sewage in, uh, in a town would be two, two and a half years. That's the earliest. Most of us won't be alive to see this thing built out. It's like.
Speak for yourself.
It's like a, um, a 10 to 15 year build out. So it's not like it's going to happen tomorrow. But we have to get started because, uh, legally, the town is responsible for it. We have to, whether you like it or not, you're a resident of this town, so you're part of it. I'm part of it, everybody's part of it. But, um.
Absolutely, you've got it.
We, we have to, we have to get started on it. We're all working on it as hard as we can. And, um, I've been noticing that every time we have a zoning meeting, it devolves into surface drainage. And so we're trying to work on that too. We're trying to get that, um, passageway through the penton property so that we can get rid of some of that water and get some of that water further going south toward some of these drainage areas, these tributaries to the river that we have. The parish is helping us. We're just, we're doing a lot of things that people don't see behind the scenes and most of the work we do is behind the scenes. But, um, we're all working on it. We have just as many concerns as every one of you. And like I say, we're residents of this town too and we don't want to see it go, go bad. Um, I think that, that, these two things, surface drainage and sewer should be our number one priorities. I mean, all this other stuff, these, all these other little projects and, and whatnot are beautiful, they're great, I love them. And, uh, I think if we can get them done, that's great, you know? But, but our priorities need to change to actually do the needs of the town as opposed to the wants. So that's about all I can tell you is just hang with us. Try to help us. Quit trying to fight us and try to help us. Think up ideas about what we can do because it's going to happen. You can't stop it. And so.
I have, I have a question, Mr. Dino. So I keep hearing that we're legally bound to do all of this. Then what exactly are we voting on? Why are we voting if we're so legally bound? What are we voting on?
Well, and I haven't been involved in the case in a few years.
Fair enough.
I, I don't know exactly where this, it is in the courts. But my understanding is that both parties are legally bound to follow the, the developmental agreement. And, um, and the courts have had a interpretation of the developmental agreement and to some extent the, the city has not enforced its rights under the developmental agreement. And I, I think that, um, that's basically where we stand with it.
Is that the developmental agreement already?
Yeah, oh yeah.
I, I can tell you that Judge Buresh has said that, um, this has nationwide implications because if you start contradicting a contract, I mean, when you have a contract, that's, that's what you have to do. You sign a contract and that's what the town did. And this is going to have really far-reaching complications if we don't abide by the contract. And so we have to do it. We're trying to find ways to do it and we're going to do it. So we're asking for your help to do it. Don't fight us, help us.
Is there any more discussion on this particular issue? Yes, sir. Can you appro, can you approach?
No, not Stewart.
Stewart. No, we, we, Stewart, Stewart will always get the last word in, don't worry about it.
That's all. Hello, I'm Kevin Reed. Um, property owner for about three years and live on St. Charles. Just a couple of questions. One, given the number of housing units that we look at for in this development, we can assume approximately two and a quarter cars per house. It seems to be the average in most PUDs. And we, with a single exit coming on 36, has the state done a traffic study for 36 in regards to this? And have that been vetted by you all? Because we're looking at dumping all these cars in a single point. And we all know most people tend to work like eight, you know, hours. And so there'll be three times a day that I don't know how 36 would be operable. That's question number one. Number two, what about a special taxing district that would encompass and be continuous with the PUD itself? And let's do that as an overlay. We seem to like overlays. In, in this presentation, you said, let's do a tax overlay, a special taxing district and let them pay for. We have, how many police officers here in Abida now? Four. And how much are we going to increase the housing stock? So how many police officers are we going to have at what point? And how are we going to pay for them? It's, it's not just the sewage. It's not just the utility side. What about the fire side? We, thank goodness, the fire department's right there. But it would seem to me that by putting this many houses in one area, and I know it's a build out over time, but we're going to strain a lot of the systems, a lot of the services that a city provides. And I think that has to be fully incorporated into the right study as this is built out, being it dictated by the court or not.
And, and yes, sir, and all those things are being considered. We're looking at it as hard as we can. Uh, it's a lot, a lot of funding issues. It's a lot of cooperation issues. Um, we're trying to do it. The traffic, um, you know, like I say, it's not going to be immediate. And the parish is building other roads. Like I, like I said before, if I was going to Slidell or Pearl River or Mandeville, I'd go up to 1088 instead of coming back through Abida. That would be a long way to go. So I don't think that the traffic's going to be really as bad as everybody believes it will be. And plus, we're working on getting Harrison Road open. Uh, we're working with President Cooper on that to get that Harrison Road through. That would be another bypass that they could use to not come through Abida. Uh, if they're going to New Orleans or Covington. And so I think a lot of these things are dependent on a lot of other things. But we're looking at all of it and we're trying, we're talking to people. We're trying to get cooperation and, uh, so just help us out.
Don't waste your time. Get that taxing district, lay it over.
Oh, the taxing district, yeah, we could do that. That's a PUD, I mean, we, it's a mud.
One more time.
And, um, I've, I've lived in muds. The, the mud tax that you put on people is minimal. It's really minimal. And it does go away once the, uh, loan, the loan gets paid off, it goes away.
I think a lot of these people would be much more supportive if they had a taxing district that was unique, that these individuals.
That is one of the things, that's one of the things we've looked at. I've talked to the assessor about, uh, putting a mud tax. And, uh, he says there's already two in St. Camity Parish, two special taxing districts and, and he doesn't really like them because it gives him some more accounting to do. But, uh, but it could happen.
Well, truthfully, every recreational district is a special taxing district.
Correct.
So there's a large precedent to have it done.
That could very much happen.
Thank you.
I'm working with Alderman Sauson on that right now.
All right, Stu, we're going to try to wrap up here.
I'll try to be quick, but in it, some new things have come up. One of them is traffic study. No, they refused to do traffic study because they said it was too early. There wasn't any traffic to study. And the, the taxing district, the people who live there have to vote for it. So you've got to get people to move in there and then have them vote for the tax. You can't just have people outside the tax put a tax on the new people.
Negative, that's not right.
Let's not get into it.
Yeah, let's not.
This is. Okay, but I, what, what I originally wanted to comment on was Alderman Template's remark. What, what are you here voting for if it's already totally constrained by a contract? You're, you're voting for how that plat looks, how that, whether it's the zoning, whether you call it a plat or zoning, you're, you, all the little buildings that are laid out there is where they're going to go. And, uh, if you think that's going to be wrong for the town, you should be saying so and voting no. Whether the contract says, yeah, we got to let them build, but it doesn't say we have to let them build right here, right here and right there, as far as I know. That, that doesn't go into that kind of detail in the contract itself.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Leanne.
Um, so we have a development agreement, but the developer and the town are still bound by the other regulations that apply. And we have a PUD ordinance that, um, was reserved and repealed. It still applies to this particular development. So this is part of the process. Um, I wanted to point out to, um, the board that the ordinance appears to be referencing, referencing just phase one. And I believe that when you're rezoning and adopting this plan, um, it should apply to the entire PUD plat and plan for the rezoning purposes. So that may be something that we need to amend. I'm reviewing the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission from August and it says that Commissioner Leno motioned to make the recommendation to town council to accept the PUD. Commissioner Guidry seconded the motion and all voted in favor. So we were just reviewing this ordinance and it seems to separate phase one out from the plan, from the plan. Um, I'm not sure what the expectation would be as far as what we do with that, but I just wanted to point that out to you guys.
Leanne, that was part of the reason why I called you today because this has phase one in it and we're approving tonight the PUD zoning.
The plan for that.
Phase one has to be approved by planning and zoning with the lots, et cetera, before it comes, comes to us. So the phase one portion needs to be taken out of this ordinance.
Yeah, so the Planning and Zoning Commission would approve phase one for subdivision and that would not come to you.
Not come yet, okay.
Yes. So this is, um, approval of the.
PUD zoning?
The PUD plat and plan that is in front of you.
Mr. Dino, can we leave phase one in this line 32? I'm sorry, 31?
I, I, the ordinance says with, unlike state law and other things where we have the option to accept or, or reject or amend, we don't have that ability here. It's the interpretation of, of what occurred at the, uh, at the zoning meeting, which I wasn't there, uh, to, to know what the intent was, whether it was to be to just phase one or whether it was the whole thing. A PUD ordinance just talks about approving them in phases. I think the developmental agreement talks about approving them in phases. But I wasn't, I wasn't present at the, at the, um, meeting. So I don't know what the intent of, of the board was.
And the developmental schedule's broken down by phases.
I'm sorry?
The developmental schedule is broken down by phases this way.
Yeah.
Mr. Henny. When's the, how many homes are in the second phase? Ballpark? First phase is 71, second phase is?
Mr. Dino, does planning and zoning have the authority to approve anything? I think they just recommend.
They approve sub, they approve the re-subdivision. Under our, under our, um, ordinance is dealing with a PUD, which is how this is governed, is under our ordinances. It just says to accept or reject the, the recommendation of the, of the, uh, of the zoning commission. And I, I wanted, I wanted to make another point because I think that the issue's raised is that we have, um, something's put before us and we have to approve it because of a, a court order, et cetera. Well, really what's happened is that the, uh, the, um, the preliminary plat has already been approved.
Thank you, that's right.
And the, the final plat has to be in conformance. If it's in conformance with the, with the preliminary plat, that's basically what the, what the criterion is. I mean, I mean, if, if we were presented with something that was way out of line from what was already approved as the preliminary plat, you know, that would be one thing. But the, apparently the planning commission has, has stated however big a piece the, the development they're talking about, that they found that the final plat conformed to the preliminary plat. So, uh, and I think that's what, that's what we're, that's what we're having to approve or disapprove.
Well, well.
You know, I, I don't think that this board has the ability to say, uh, well, we're going to revisit the preliminary plat.
We, we can't, that would change the contract.
Yeah, well, it would change, that, that would change. Uh, our, our ordinance says that, that it, that the final plat has to be submitted in conformity with the preliminary plat. And we already have a preliminary, for better or for worse, we have a preliminary plat that's been.
That's right.
Been approved.
That's right.
It meets with particularity, it says.
So because of the way it is written and has been advertised to approve phase one of the Abida Meadows PUD, is that the only action we could take tonight?
No, it could be amended, right?
I don't know if you can amend it after it's been advertised? That's my question.
I think you could, I think that you could amend it. Would, uh, I don't know what was advertised though. I didn't see what the advertisement was. If it, if it said to, um, to, to do phase one, I think it would be difficult to come back and say, oh, well, we've, we've changed it to everything else. But, uh, I didn't see what was advertised, so I don't know.
Hey, just, uh, some clarification. The zoning applies obviously to the entire property, not just phase one. And when I spoke with Ms. Torterich earlier, she said that her intention was to have this be the final PUD hearing and it would apply to the entire property, just as the preliminary did. It really wouldn't make sense to continually come back every phase and have another zoning discussion.
Was it zoned, it's zoned. Wasn't this zoned in 2018 and approved?
It already is zoned a PUD, this is a.
Yeah, it's, it's already zoned a PUD. Whether we're accepting the plat for the entire, for the entire development or doing it in phases. And that's, I think that's up to the town. And what the planning commission did, I'm not real sure.
The planning commission forwarded favorably, correct?
Yes.
And they said the preliminary matches, which we have in front of us tonight, correct?
It says to make the recommendation to town council to accept the PUD.
Thank you.
Um, and our ordinance here says that ordinances 309, 313, 476, 480 and 484 be recognized and reordained and incorporated by referencing herein. So those were the ordinances that throughout the years have referenced portions of this property and zoned them as a PUD and it was associated with various different plans throughout that period of time. This particular ordinance relates to this PUD plat and plan.
In its entirety of 167.79 acres.
Yes.
That was advertised as 167.79 acres because we haven't subdivided any other parcels. So it's all one parcel.
Right.
So we are not voting on the zoning?
It's, it's zoned.
It's zoned.
It's zoned, yeah.
Because earlier we were, she, uh, Alderman Contois was saying we're voting on the zoning, not the final plat.
No, I'll tell you what my understanding is. My understanding is it's been zoned a PUD. And that's why, that's why we, uh, because the PUD zoning lapses if it's not acted on within a certain period of time. So we rezoned all, we, we mentioned that all those other ordinances in which the, um, zoning took place into a PUD into this ordinance so that it kept them all from expiring under the law. So that we have all of the, um, the whole piece of property contained in a PUD. Now, we've got a plat that's, that's put forth before us that's to conform with the zoning. It's not the zoning itself, that's my understanding. And that, that plat, under, under the, under our ordinances and under the developmental agreement can be approved in stages. Whether that's being done or not, I really don't know because I wasn't at the, at the meeting. But we're not rezoning the property, it's zoned a PUD. The question is whether we approve that the plats are conforming to what we view as the PUD. We've already approved the preliminary plat. And the issue is now, does this plat conform? We've already approved the preliminary plat, and the issue is now, does this plat conform generally or doesn't conflict with what's already been approved? That's one issue. The other issue, in my mind, is whether we are to approve the entire development, the plat for the entire development today, or whether we're going to approve the Phase 1. That's important to know what the commission intended, because we don't have the ability to amend it. We can either approve it or disapprove it. So, when we vote to approve it tonight, we might want to restate, you know, just for clarity, what's being approved.
Well, again, then, if they have only forwarded us the approval... I'm reading the language for Phase 1 of the plat. How can we assume that it would be more than that? How would we enact that?
That's the way the ordinance was presented. That's the way the ordinance is drafted right now. But when you look at the recommendation from the commission, it just says approve the PUD. Well, we've already really approved the PUD. It doesn't say approve a plat. It doesn't say... The recommendation doesn't say approve the PUD plat. It does... It just says approve the PUD, which we've approved. So, part of the... One of the ways that it would make sense would be to adopt the ordinance in which we have reapproved all the expired PUDs. That would make sense. But the relevance to the plat itself, I'm unclear. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the intent was. I wasn't there.
Well, I don't know how we solve this in a timely manner.
Well, you know, I was looking... I know there's some talk about... There's some deadline as far as... And there is a deadline on re-subdivision of property. I haven't seen a deadline on approving a plat for approval of a PUD plan.
Can I add something here? I think it's useful to separate the language that we use, because a PUD plan is different than a final plat. A final plat creates the lots of record. At that point, we'd be allowed to sell houses... Sell lots, and the home builder would go build houses. That's not what we're talking about tonight. As you, Ms. Contoy, mentioned earlier, this is simply a PUD drawing that shows the location, size, layout of the subdivision. It's not intended to be used for conveyance. So, understanding that knowledge and then listening when Ms. Schaefer reads the minutes, the P&amp;Z Commission didn't say Phase 1. They said, "We move to approve the PUD." That's what they said. So, it seems to me, if you choose to affirm their decision, you'd be affirming the entire PUD, and that would have nothing to do with any final plats. That's a separate process before P&amp;Z on October 30th.
That's correct, and that will never come before this board. It's strictly a...
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
Right.
And no lots can be sold until that's...
Until that's done.
I'd like to reference our PUD ordinance. In Step 3 in 9-803, it refers to the final plat procedure. And the intent, the purpose of the final plat is to designate with particularity the lands subdivided into conventional lots, as well as a division of other lands not so subdivided into common open space and building sites. The final plat is intended as a document to be recorded. The final plat shows the exact location of facilities, while the preliminary plat shows the general location of the same facilities. I don't know if that gives any clarity, but...
Nope. I'm even more confused now.
I'm sorry.
Well, the way I understand it is that in order to create a PUD, a PUD requires certain metrics, like where are your streets, where is your water, where are your ponds, what percentage of green space? All of those things are percentages that make up the whole drawing for the PUD, right? So, you have to have a master plan that gets approved. Then, it goes to preliminary to make sure everything's done right and that the lot sizes are correct, et cetera. And then, it's going to come back in phases to Planning and Zoning for each section to be approved before they could officially subdivide lots and sell individual lots and build anything. So, I think coming back around full circle is, the only thing that this board would do would be to, one, approve the original zoning, which I guess it is currently zoned PUD if you look at the land use map for Abida, and, two, approve the sort of conceptual master plan layout. So, when they say approve the PUD to this board, that's approving the conceptual layout. And then, the individual lots will get approved, possibly in just phases. They may not get approval of all six phases at once. They may, you know, meter them out as needed.
Subject to the approval of the planning and zoning.
Subject to the approval of Planning and zoning, and then, of course, all the inspections that go along with each phase. So, that's kind of where we are. Is that a good summation?
It also says that the final plat shall be submitted as a planned unit development plat and shall conform substantially to the preliminary plat as approved, and if desired by the petitioner, may be submitted in stages.
It is not desired by the petitioner to be submitted in stages.
Well, this has got Phase 1 all over it. It's saying we're approving the final plat, which you just said is not a function that we would do.
It's the final PUD plat.
He's saying himself that we're not doing the final plat.
Yes, sir.
Because then that would be creating the lots of record, right?
I think it's simply a typo. I think you've been asked to approve the final PUD plan, and I think, for purposes of clarity, we should avoid using the word plat, because that is a different...
It's all over in this instrument. That's my problem.
Well, and in our PUD ordinance...
I mean, that's what I'm just saying. It's like, this is...
And unfortunately, in our PUD ordinance, it's referred to as the final PUD plat, or they refer to it as a final plat. So, and I'm not sure where it just says final plat, because it says final plan unit development plat and final subdivision plat. So, they're making a distinction between the two plats. And it may be uncommon, but unfortunately, that's the way it's written in our code.
I'm sure. I'm just as confused as the rest of us on the code.
Yeah.
I just... As a matter of clarity, the purpose tonight, as I understand, is to approve the final PUD plan, has nothing to do with a Phase 1 plat that would create lots.
Right.
I understand it's written...
That's exactly what this says.
Strangely. Maybe it needs to be amended verbally, if that's allowed.
Yep. And that's what this says. That's regular session conveyance. The planned unit development, PUD, final plat hyphen Phase 1 and zoning district located... So, just one, Phase 1?
That's all it says, is Phase 1. And it says final plat.
Final plat, Phase 1.
Not plan or concept or anything like that. It says plat.
And that's in the ordinance that was introduced. Is that what you're referring to? Are you reading from our introduced ordinance?
That's in the... Therefore, it be ordained, the only truly really important part of this.
The planned unit development, final plat, Phase 1 and zoning district. So, this was a template that was provided for this, and it may have been taken, you know, by our planning consultant. So, it may have been taken from another municipality or governing authority that was only approving the Phase 1. And I just noticed it this evening before the meeting, right at the initiation of the meeting tonight.
I believe you. This is confusing stuff.
Yeah.
Because the language matters in the law.
It does. It matters a great deal. I don't know where to go from here.
What if we...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Why can we not just, when we get to agenda modification, modify the agenda to approve what Planning and Zoning recommended?
Well, you can't modify the agenda. I mean, you can modify the agenda, but...
Modify the agenda with unanimous approval.
Yeah, but I don't... And Mr. Dino, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
We didn't publicly... We didn't put out in the public.
I don't know that we could have...
Well, we're talking about a final plat approval, so it is the same subject. And I think the people are here... I don't know that they made a distinction between Phase 1 or the PUD plan. And I know that, you know, we do amend ordinances and change certain aspects of it, and I guess it depends upon how substantially it's changed. Is that correct, Mr. Dino?
Yeah. I think you could probably amend it to be the whole PUD plan. I think you couldn't amend it to do the reverse of what the, you know... I don't think you'd say, could have changed the advertisement to approve it, amend it to disapprove it. I don't think you could do something like that. But I think that you could amend it, if you wanted to, to include the entire... Particularly, the way this is worded, it's really... It wouldn't be an unreasonable interpretation of what was given, you know, from Planning and Zoning. And I don't know how the ordinance was... I think it was drafted by our consultant, who... Were they at the meeting? Was the consultant at the meeting?
They were.
So, that's what they presented. At least, that was their take, apparently, of what happened at the meeting. So, I think that, in some way, the board's put in a position that is not where you necessarily want to be on approving a recommendation. But I think you could amend it, and I think this is... At least gives you something to hang your hat on to do that.
Ms. Schaefer, would you kindly read the board's wording, like, one more time, about planning and zoning?
Let's see if I can find it again. So, that was the August?
28th.
Commissioner Leno motioned to make the recommendation to Town Council to accept the PUD. Commissioner Guidry seconded the motion, all voted in favor.
Is there anything else that's not included here?
Abida Meadows' final PUD approval request. The commission reviewed the checklist for submissions. Kristin Torterich said the engineer is still reviewing everything, and a report is expected next week. Stuart Eastman urged the commission to thoroughly review the plat and not to just look at the checklist of received items. I guess I could pull up the YouTube video.
No, that has to be...
You know, in part of answering the question, I think you could do it either way. I mean, I think you could do it as a Phase 1, and I think you could do it as the whole thing. I think that that's how unclear it is, as far as what the recommendation is.
It seems to me the Planning and Zoning Commission did not only say Phase 1.
Well, it says here, "And after..." Either. It didn't say approve a plat. It just said approve the PUD. And part of the ordinance was approving past PUDs. So, it could be taken, they only acted on part of the recommendation, on part of the ordinance, and didn't recommend... Give a recommendation on the other part of the ordinance.
This ordinance wasn't presented to them. This ordinance wasn't.
If you look at...
Well, then, they didn't address the plat in their acts.
Well, it says that on between lines 2024, "Whereas, on August 28, 2025, the Abida Springs Planning Commission reviewed the subject PUD, final plat, as part of a duly noted public meeting, and after hearing public comment, as part of a public hearing, motioned to recommend approval of the Abida Meadows' planned unit development, final plat zoning and associated zoning district."
That's a good observation, yes.
So, why can we not just approve that portion tonight and move forward?
Did you read this? So, I guess the question when we get to the additional discussion and old business when it comes time for your consideration and adoption of the ordinance, as to whether you want to approve it as it is presented, whether you would like to amend it, to remove the Phase 1 aspects of the ordinance, or whether you disapprove it.
Okay.
If you decide to amend...
If you look at the ordinance, it says approve or disapprove.
Not the ordinance approve or disapprove their recommendation. Recommendation is being amended by saying Phase 1.
Yeah, if their recommendation... Excuse me. If their recommendation was not specific to a phase, their recommendation was to the final plat zoning and associated zoning district.
Right.
That would be the project as a whole.
Yes.
I think what happened is, either whether through a typo, or I don't know why, but the way that the instrument was written...
Right.
Added the Phase 1, but that was never part of their recommendation. So, that seems to be erroneous, and I don't know if we can clarify that by an amendment.
So, if that were to be amended, we would have to memorialize that in writing at the meeting prior to... And Mr. Dino is reviewing to make sure that that is an acceptable course of action.
I'm looking at line 26 and 27, where it states, "Whereas both final plant unit development plat and final subdivision plat approval are necessary to allow the sale of lots in Phase 1 to future homebuyers." So, it seems to me that this is just, as Regan said, the concept of the PUD itself. But they have to come back and do the final plat, if that's what I'm understanding, Mr. Henning.
That's next month, correct?
Yes. The Phase 1 final plat is going for P&amp;Z on the 30th.
Then you would be able to move into Phase 1 for future homebuyers. So, this is... The way I'm reading it, learned attorney, is that it's just the concept.
So, the problematic areas are in the title and on line 31.
Now that we... I think we're all good on so far. Okay.
Let's be sure we're not abandoning anything and saying, this is what our understanding of the recommendation is.
Yeah.
And then, based on that understanding, that's what we're doing. We're good.
But it says Phase 1. The plat wants to say Phase 1. So, this is the Town Council, I would say, the final plat. And the planning commission showed who or disapproved of the final plat. Show...
That's what we're doing.
The ordinance that has...
We've already planned, but you can...
Leanne, who composed this ordinance?
I work with planning council. I'm a...
All right.
It's definitely a complex...
Yes.
Situation to incorporate all aspects of our development agreement, everything that's transpired.
Sure.
What we've done, where we are, and the PUD ordinance and our subdivision regulations.
Well, it's just a big step for the town, so it seems to me that if we're going to approve or deny, the language of what's approved or denied is going to be memorialized in this document, so it, you know...
Needs to be right.
It has to be amended if it needs to be amended.
Right.
We can't have something in there that says, "We only approved Phase 1," and five years from now, that is called to question.
And from what I understand, oftentimes, there will be an expiration on this type of approval. Now, generally, it's five years, but we have a build-out, a schedule here. What is it, Mr. Henning? 15 years down the road, potentially? What is it, Mr. Henning, 15 years down the road, potentially four, all the way to Phase Six or Seven?
I think 10 years is a reasonable estimate.
Okay.
Yeah, Phase Six is 2040. Phase Five is 2037.
Just an estimate.
Yeah.
Tell me what interest rates are going to be 10 years from now.
Yeah, and the schedule that you initially proposed is long since passed, too.
Yeah.
What we were doing was Phase One, from what my feelings was. But I think you have the, I think you have the ability to make it either the whole amount or Phase One, but if you do it, I think it should be, there should be something on the record that you're following the recommendation of planning and zoning. I think that you should say, we are following the recommendation of plans, planning zoning, the motion, perhaps the motion could be made to follow the recommendation of planning and zoning to either do it, the full plat, or do the Phase One, whichever your, your preference is. But I would recommend that it be included in the motion so that everyone understands and when it's, that that was what the intent was, that was the understanding of what the recommendation was from planning and zoning, and so that everybody's on the same page with it.
So would there, if they wanted to do the full plat, would they make a motion to approve and just remove Phase One and then Thirty One?
I think, I think what we have to do, because the amendment has to be in writing, is to, is to go through this thing, make the, why don't you go through it, make the notations about Phase One, and then, and then when we have it in writing, then read it out so that everybody knows what it is.
Okay, and so we're still in the public hearing right now, and.
Yes.
We, if you guys want to think about that in between, or is that the next thing on the agenda? It's probably the next.
No, we still got a little.
Oh, the chairman reports, okay. So when we get into old business, if you want to think about.
Okay.
What it is that you'd like to do, and if there's somebody that would like to make a motion, we can work through it.
Okay, all right. At this point, we're going to do roll call.
Here.
Alderman Contois.
Here.
Alderman Saucy.
Here.
Alderman Tomplay.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Patterson is acting as chairman.
Now call for any agenda modifications?
None.
Seeing none, acceptance of September nine, ninth, 2025 Town Council meeting.
So made.
Alderman Saucy is first, Alderman Tomplay is second. We're going to move on to reports. Unfortunately, the marshal is unavailable this evening, so we're going to move straight to chairman reports. We'll, I think, I tell you what, we already started this, and we're going to start at this end. How about Alderman Tomplay, you get to be first on that.
All right, so for the Human and Community Services report, the individual on-site sewer disposal systems, the letters requesting certification for homes in Zone Five were mailed in August. We will be sending the remainder of letters this week to the residents that did not respond to our request in Zone Four, which again is the final zone, will be mailed out next week. That will be a total of 105 notifications next week to be sent out. Just a reminder, the, this weekend, because of the Fall Fest, that is going to cancel out the art and farmer's market. So they won't, that won't be going on. And a congratulations to Debbie McLean, who celebrated nineteen, her 19th anniversary with serving the town of Abida Springs. Debbie's been as a clerk through steady work and reliability, and now leads the Building Department, so congratulations to her. And again, I don't, was not supplied any of the law enforcement updates from the marshal, so I'll have to catch you back up next month. Thanks.
Alderman Saucy?
Okay. Finance Department obviously continues to work with our accountant firm, DHHM, to provide them with information, which they provide to the board. August 2025 data was submitted last week, so hopefully the board will be receiving August actual numbers at the next meeting. Jennifer is the new hire in finance. She continues to enter all the data into QuickBooks. One thing that has been completed that was not done prior to this year is the scanning of all 2025 invoices. That has been done, and now, they are now working to scan the 2024 invoices. Things were not scanned into the computer prior to 2025 beginning. Proposed budget for 2025, I was, you guys can see that as number two under Old Business. 2026 budget is expected to be provided to the Alderman by Wednesday, October 29th, for discussion, and 11:04 for introduction. Bond money. The bond attorney last week, it appears the town will be able to allocate existing account balances to a new capital outlay fund. Regan and EJ, I know you guys have spoken about that. We need to get all of our capital outlay funds out of the general fund. If you could look at our budget for Public Works, it's over, what is it, $8 million? $6 million of that is from capital outlay projects. That should not be in our general operating budget for utilities or for Public Works. And you cannot use those funds for anything else, they're dedicated for those specific purposes. And when we go to break down and calculate what our salaries are to revenues, you can't be using those grant monies in the equations, because that really decreases the percentage of salaries to revenues. Request for capital outlay for 2026 needs to be into Baton Rouge by November the first. And obviously, we're working on every aspect we can, from every angle, to submit as much as we can for capital outlay for sewer and drainage. New things also on the list for capital outlay, the new Keller Street lift station, new East Abida Meadows Forest Main, and installation of a secondary source of a water well. The town's also discussing the possibility of submitting a propose, proposal to Lake Ponchartrain Basin Restoration Program for funding of projects that meet their criteria, including a positive drainage study. And we are still waiting on the DEQ 3.8 million dollar loan request that we made. Will we get capital outlay money of 3.8 million? Will we get a loan for 3.8 million? Will we get a combination of both? We don't know yet, but that's well underway, and Ms. Schaefer is in constant contact with Baton Rouge, as I, as am I, as well as Alderman Boudreau seeking funding. That's it.
All right.
I'm sorry, one last thing. Danette for Finance, no, I'll wait till we get to, to Old Business, I'll wait.
Alderman Contois?
All right, Planning and Zoning. So we, by the request of citizens, have broken up the Conference of Rezoning Effort into four different phases, or four different areas, I should say, and we're having area meetings, two of which have already happened, and were very well attended, two more to come. October 8th, which is tomorrow, is the Central and East Abida Meeting, and then October 15th will be the Rural and North Abida Meeting. Those happen from 5:30 to 7:00 here, and, you know, it will not be just people sitting up here, you can come in and talk to Kristin or the other planners and specifically ask questions if you have any questions about. And, and on the October 30th, at the next Planning and Zoning Meeting, they're going to give a recap of all of their findings, and with an eye of eventually, maybe in November, maybe further along, adopting the revised plan. So, and October 30th will also be the final P and Z meeting for the subdivision of the Meadows, assuming that progresses. So we like to see everybody here, we like that people have sort of woken up to the conversation about planning and zoning, and they're getting involved, and we're here to listen, we're not going to speed through the Conference of Rezoning, we're breaking it down and getting as, giving as many opportunities for you to participate, so please do.
Alderman Boudreau?
All right, Infrastructure. Once again, I want to thank Danette for keeping us abreast of what's going on with all the activities with the maintenance crews. You might have seen them out on 36th, they were repairing a forest main out there on a lift, going to a lift station, so I think they got that fixed pretty good. They had a water line repair on Portman Street. It didn't require a boil water, because they used a, I call them a dressel sleeve, it's a clamp that goes around a pipe, and you don't have to, you know, cut into it or anything like that, so there was no boil water problem. They did replace two culverts on St. Joseph Street, and by the way, that was a good job they did. They, they put two in there right on Ninth Street, and they got it fixed at both ends, and they put grass on one end. I said, that's what, that will keep it from, from eroding away, and so I hope that really works. It was, that was a good job, I think, I went over there and looked at it. They were doing some work on Bryan Street to try to get the, the water flowing out of that area back there, of Bryan and Golden and Mickler and all that, so they, they've been working on some of that back there. And in the meantime, they did 89 work orders, so they're doing a good job. Last thing I want to tell you is about the sewer plant. You should be seeing something coming out of the ground. They, that's still on, on track for May of '26, and so you should be seeing a, a tank growing out there, and if that thing ever gets online, that'll really help a lot of our capacity problem with sewer. So, so that's what's going on right now with infrastructure. Thank you, Danette.
Okay. I'd just like to inform everybody that the mayor is in as good a spirits as he can be after his surgery. He, he's feeling good, he's going through physical therapy now, he is up walking around, and he's actually able to put pressure on his right leg that he was not able to for, for quite some time, so we wish him a speedy recovery, but he, he's doing, he's doing well, and our prayers go out to Teresa.
He was actually, he was actually walking in his yard yesterday.
Yeah.
He was outside walking.
So the best to Teresa on that. Let's see here, now we're back, there is no new business, so we are now back to the old business, which is the consideration of the, of instrument 2025-009001 that we have talked about before in this meeting. Now, it was my understanding that we could make some changes to this verbiage-wise, is that correct?
Yeah.
I was looking at the, at the top of it, where the instrument, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the Town of Abida Springs to adopt the recommendations of the Planning and, the Planning Commission to approve, and then I went straight to the final zoning plat.
Why don't we make a motion to introduce it, and then we can make a motion if we want to, to amend it.
I would ask for a motion to introduce.
So made.
Alderman Saucy, second by Alderman Boudreau. Do we need a roll call vote? No, all in favor? Or we just need an internation?
We're just, we're just introducing the motion to.
Yes.
It is hereby introduced.
We're introducing the motion to pass it.
It's introduced.
Yeah, but we, before we vote to adopt it, we have to, if there's anybody wanting to offer an amendment to it.
Yes.
Now would be the time to do it.
Okay. I'm looking at the header of this particular document. I would like to remove to approve Phase One of the Meadows Plan Unit Development PUD, and have it say, to approve the final zoning plat and associated zoning district, so it would just continue on.
So you want to just remove Phase One, and it would approve?
Is, is that agreeable?
I agree with that.
I'll agree.
Phase One hasn't been approved yet by Planning and Zoning.
No.
No.
All right, and then.
We want to be sure, you want to remove the words Phase One, is that correct?
Right, to approve Phase One of the Abida Meadows Plan Unit Development.
So as I understand it, what that would do is, that would just approve the PUD as a PUD.
Correct.
The whole thing.
Correct.
Right.
Just as Planning and Zoning has recommended.
Yes. Okay.
And on line 31, you have a reference for that as well.
Yeah, 31 would be.
That the Plan Unit Development, they'd get rid of final plat, Phase One, and zoning.
I would say final zoning plat.
Are you, excuse me, are you looking just, if you remove Phase One?
Okay.
That approves the final PUD plat.
Okay.
In its entirety, right? Isn't that, read that.
So can we just strike Phase One, Mr. Dino?
The way, the way it's here, and I'm only saying that because it has to be in writing, is to, to delete on the, end of the second line, delete the words Phase One.
Yes, sir.
And then on line 31, the first two words, just delete the lines, Phase One, and.
Do you want?
And.
And.
Do you want us to read that out to you, so you can hear how it sounds?
Yes.
You want to read it to them?
Well, it's an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the Town of Abida Springs to adopt the recommendation of the Planning, the Planning Commission to approve.
The final zoning plat.
Yeah, to approve.
To approve the Abida Meadows.
The Abida, it should be approve the Abida Meadows, so we just.
Add the word the?
No, we take out of, approve the Abida Meadows Plan Unit Development PUD final zoning plat, and I believe we probably this.
Just check out the word of, too.
I think this recommendation came from the zoning commission. Am I right?
Planning and zoning.
Simple as possible.
It should be zoning.
They have to approve that.
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
It's, it's zoning.
Okay.
So let's delete the word planning and put zoning in its place.
Okay.
Can you read that back? Just to make sure we got it right.
Yeah, he'll read it back to us.
If we say planning and zoning, we can.
In ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the Town of Abida Springs to adopt the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the Abida Meadows Plan Unit Development PUD final zoning plat, plat, and associated zoning district. And that's, that's the meat of what that amendment does, and on line 31, it would be, therefore be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the Town of Abida Springs in its regular session, that the Plan Unit Development PUD final plat.
Zoning district.
Let me take out and, zoning district located at Highway 36 east of Abey Road, being as hereby approved in accordance with the developmental agreement, approved via ordinance 485 and PUD final approval process, repealed but in effect for this pre-existing PUD in sections nine dash eight oh three and nine dash eight oh four, repealed and reserved of the Town of Abida Springs Code of Ordinances. So basically, we've taken out the reference to Phase One in that.
Do you have a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
Amend this.
To amend it.
Read.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to amend this instrument 2025-09001 as read by the town attorney, that's the. the Dino.
Second.
First and a second, Mr. Sausie, the second is that.
Okay, so discussion in those four discussions.
Public, public comment?
I thought the ordinance tonight had to do with the plan and not the plat, unless I misunderstood this whole conversation.
I think you understood it. I think the issue, the reason they're still using the word plat is because that's the way our ordinance reads for the PUD process. Is that correct, Janet? I'm sorry. Leanne? Come on, I'm just trying to get through this.
Mr. Henning, what's the definition between plat and plan?
Yes.
It says it's a plat, a land.
Let's finish with her first. Does that answer your question?
I, I think a plat is what's in existence, a plan is when you intend to put there, is what, is what I think. The difference is.
But there, there is a distinction between a final PUD plat or plan and a subdivision plat. The subdivision plat is what divides the land and is recorded in the clerk's office and allows them to sell the individual lots. This plat or plan that's being considered tonight does not allow that.
That will come up at the, the next meeting of planning, is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
That's later this month with planning and zoning. They deferred last month until those last checkoff things were done. Correct.
Okay.
So, my comment is, directly applies to the amendment, so that's what we're supposed to be commenting on. I see two things wrong with it. One is, it's evident from all this discussion that you're supposed to be approving or, or disapproving, saying yes or no to the recommendation of the planning and zoning or zoning commission. But it's clear that you don't know exactly what they did recommend, whether they recommended just the first part or the whole thing. And you've been discussing it and looking at their minutes, but the only way to find out is to ask them or to have a joint meeting or something. But in, in, in just saying, you know, we're going to make, we're going to say it meant this, that's, that's not approve, that's not voting on whether they, on their approval or not. It's doing something new. And the second part is the public. You told the public it was about the first section. If you make it the whole thing, then the public and coming to a public meeting were not properly informed. So, I see those as both problems with this amendment.
We know exactly what planning and zoning voted, voted on and what they recommended, and they also deferred to approve Phase One until the October meeting.
Okay. Now, is there anyone else that has any comments on this particular part of the, of this introduction? Okay. Now, do we need to read in, in, in its entirety, the?
I think we.
We just, we just, now, I'll ask for a motion to.
Call a question.
Okay, I call, I call the.
So, we already did a first and a second.
I know, but that, that was, that was for the, for the change.
Yeah, that's what you have to vote on, adopt the amendment.
All right. All right, yes. So.
Call the question on the amendment.
I'll call the question.
It's a roll call vote?
Roll call vote to approve or disapprove the amendment.
We're voting, we're voting on the amendments to the document.
Alderman Boudreaux?
Aye.
Alderman Contois?
Aye.
Alderman Sausie?
Aye.
Alderman Tomplay?
Nay.
Okay, three yea, one nay. So, then you would vote to adopt as amended?
Yeah, and let everyone talk about it.
Again.
Again, if they have comments on the, on the, on the ordinance as amended. Okay. Does anyone have any comments on the ordinance as amended?
You're here to cast a vote for some reason. You're supposed to either approve or disapprove of what's been recommended to you. You're not forced by law to vote one way or the other, and that seems to be the impression I'm getting, that some of you believe. You should vote your conscience on whether you think this is good for the town or not. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will introduce a motion to adopt. Is that correct?
Didn't they already introduce the question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is.
To adopt as amended.
Anyone else? I call the question.
To adopt as amended.
To adopt the instrument as amended.
So made.
Second.
First and a second.
We only need a first and a second.
Roll call vote.
Yeah, nobody wants to talk.
Alderman Boudreaux?
Aye.
Alderman Contois?
Aye.
Alderman Sausie?
Aye.
Alderman Tomplay?
Motion is adopted. All right, we're going to move on to discussion of instrument 2025-09-002, an ordinance amending ordinance 551, an operating budget of revenue and expenditures for the year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025. This is an opportunity for anyone to ask questions, Danette or anyone else, y'all have all been presented with this material, y'all have had time to review, to visit with it. I understand Alderman Sausie had a few questions that you got with Danette on, is that correct?
Y'all have been there a couple of times, yes.
Okay. So, if anyone has any questions, Danette is here to answer those.
That, to Alderman Sausie's point about the, the six million in the capital improvement, will that make any differences as far as voting to make the, make the adjustments here, to have that out, or it being right there, is that, is that going to matter at this point?
No, it's not. I, I don't have an issue with that in this amendment.
Okay, just, just checking. Thanks.
That is a discussion I think that we have had for 2026 to make sure that we kind of clean that up.
Yeah, I understand.
But in the, in, in the light of getting this proposed amendment to the budget passed so that we're in conformity, we didn't do those major changes to make a new fund.
Understood. Thank you.
I have a couple of things that I wanted to mention to the board. You know, if there's any amendments that are necessary, it's a good time to, to voice those concerns or help us with your perspective on how you want things to go. The mayor heard from the field director today. He said that they located a 300 KW generator that is for sale through one of the surplus governmental agencies in Baton Rouge that would sustain the town hall and the annex building. It, it appears as though that would be approximately in the neighborhood of $15,000 because it's a used piece of equipment. You know, something like that would probably go for maybe $250,000 new. Currently, we have a 100 KW generator that only sustains town hall and doesn't support the annex building in the event of, of an emergency. And one of the ideas was to take that 100 watt generator and transfer it to Indian Trail to where we'd have permanent power at our Indian Trail lift station. So, the budget worksheets don't reflect that expenditure. The funding is available in the public works portion of the budget, but there would have to be an adjustment made on the worksheets for that if you guys support that. And I would just like to get your opinion on how you feel about a purchase like that.
It's probably warranted to have that much power, 300 KW for 15 grand. That would be money well spent, depending on the condition of, of the unit.
400 hours.
400 hours on a 300 KW, it's diesel.
Yes, it's got a Detroit engine and it's diesel.
And it was, the only time it ran is for, for basically exercising it to make sure it was working.
The engine's over $50,000. It's.
Yes. Does anybody else have any thoughts about that?
Oh, about the generator?
About the generator.
If we can get, if we have, if we can find some money for it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Be great.
So, we have, we looked at the, we, we did look at the public works budget, which is where this would be purchased from, since it is an improvement to a, a town building. We do have a, a robust street and, and ditch repair in that budget with available funds if we wanted to move those funds out and put it into a capital outlay for the purchase of the generator, which again, would be a capital purchase.
How much is in that budget right now that has not been spent this year?
We have $217,000 in there, and I predicted to estimate it through the end of the year, we would only be spending roughly $40,000 of that unless we had another major street repair or drainage project going on.
That's one of my problems with this budget, is swapping money around, fund to fund, here and there.
It's not being switched fund to fund. We, I do, I do not move money from public works to utilities or, or otherwise.
This is, is within public works.
Within public works.
This would be absolutely within public works. Yes, sir.
I did want to elaborate a little bit more about the, I think they refer to it as the Ponchatrain Conservancy now, but we've gotten grants from the Lake Ponchatrain Basin Foundation, as it was previously referred to, for some planning projects in the past. There's a deadline of October 31st to submit an application for funding to the Lake Ponchatrain Basin Foundation. Matching funds would be 25%. The range is $25,000 to a potential $350,000 for a project, and it could relate to sewer projects, it can relate to drainage product, projects. We talked about a drainage study, and I know that it's a, a real problem for a lot of people in town. 70% of the funding that's available is for implementation. 30% would be design and engineering and studies and so forth. And what I'd like to, you know, get your input on is, if we were to apply for something like that, do you think that our money would be better spent, or our efforts would be better focused on a drainage study or the design? I'm concerned about the design for the Abita Meadows Sewer Force Main because it would be delayed, because we may not have an answer for, say, you know, four to six months on whether we would get this funding. You can't start spending money in advance of the award, so.
I, I'm sure there's enough drainage issues in the Town of Abita Springs where if we had $350,000 with a 25% match, whatever, that we could find something.
Well, the drainage would be for the study, to see where our money would be best spent. So, it would evaluate our watershed, it would evaluate our hydraulics, it would, it would provide a lot of information that we currently don't have. And that would be the first step. So, the other alternative, the, the Abita Meadows Force Main is a pretty extensive project that's going to cost a lot of money. There's more money for implementation. It's possible we could get started on the design of the Abita Meadows Force Main and then apply for the implementation grant. We would have to come up with a lot of match money for that because 350,000, while it's a lot of money and it would be great, that's the most that we could get, certainly wouldn't pay for that entire project. So, these are the kind of, you know, questions and decisions we're faced with, and I'd love to hear what your perspective is.
So, I certainly would be in favor of a drainage study for the town altogether. I'm reticent to do something that is specific to Abita Meadows because we don't want to complicate the timeline, as you said. But I'm under, trying to understand if they would actually, you said 30% is for study or design, so.
30% of the $5 million that's available will be allocated for those kinds of projects. So, it's not.
We could specifically just do a drainage study without an implementation portion.
Yes, it's just that your chances are decreased because only 30% of the available money.
But we really need a drainage study for the whole town. So, that would be my inclination.
Okay.
That, that seems like priority number one for drainage. Because when we go to these zoning meetings, it always devolves into drainage.
Right.
So, that looks like project, process number one. And there's a lot of spots in this budget where, well, like engineering, I mean, this, they have $80,000 in there for engineering. What, why did they go up? They had 50,000, now they have 30,000 more. We keep adding little things like that all through this budget. I spent hours and hours working on this thing.
Any, anywhere where engineering was increased, it was taken from another fund, such as when we looked at the engineering in the general fund, it was, and, and again, I guess taken is the wrong word. It was reallocated in the budget. So, the general fund engineering fees have actually went down because we reallocated some of that to utilities and to public works because some of the engineering work that originally had been in the general fund was for Level Bervant or for Abita Meadows testing. So, we had to put a certain amount in the utility budget for engineering because the town had made the commitment to pay for the testing at Abita Meadows. So, if we didn't account for that in our amendment, then, then we're not being very good stewards, knowing we were going to go over.
Well, understand that we have the ordinance that says we can only move 5% within a fund. It doesn't say from fund to fund, it says within a fund. And we constantly doing that. We can't, we're, let's move from this fund to this fund, let's move from this fund to this fund. I mean, we need to stop doing it.
That's, that's what the budget amendment is for, isn't it?
That is what the budget amendment is for, is so that if we see needs in other areas whereby in a lot of the, the expenditures in the general fund and each of the fund actually had to be very carefully looked at and reduced because of the reduction in the revenues that we were seeing in each one of these funds. And that was mentioned as a concern, I saw, I heard that a lot, that we were not meeting our revenue expectations. So, ultimately, we were only out of our 5% allowance in the parking racks and the debt. We explained the debt because we actually moved a 2020 bond from one fund to the other after it had been looked at to determine it should actually have started in the debt service. So, truly, the only fund that was out of that 5% was parking racks. But listening to your concerns about having more overview and oversight and tightening down that 5%, then we have given you much more detail in this budget so that you have more line items that we have to stay within that 5% and then come back to you if we're going over that.
I'm going to have to come in because.
Yes, sir, I'll be on the line.
We'll be here all night if I go line item by line item. One other thing I would like to say, though, I would love to, where you have public safety and judicial review and citations, that particular dedicated money.
May I address that, Mr. Alderman Boudreaux?
You can, you can.
And, and the name of this. And the name of this change, what is it, public safety and judicial revenue citations? I'm doing a little homework right now and it appears since nineteen eighty-three, there was a one percent sales tax in sixty-five, a one percent sales tax in eighty-three, the two percent shared sales tax in two thousand and six, the one percent sales tax in eighty-three was to be split between law enforcement and the general fund. If that is correct, and I've gone back and read the audits back to twenty twelve, it's clear in there that they say fifty percent as well in the audits. If that's the case, law enforcement right now is owed between six hundred and twenty-five thousand and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And what I did, I took the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four budgets, actuals, and came up with the figures of what percentage is going into general fund versus law enforcement. So, I'm going to look into that.
Yes, sir.
But, hold on, let me finish.
I'm sorry.
So, the law that was passed, the sales tax that was voted on nineteen eighty-three was for law enforcement and we need to have a law enforcement fund, not a public safety and judicial revenue and citations fund because that is dedicated funding under...
Yes, sir. That is a fifty percent of the one percent of our sales tax is split between general and police activities. We had that discussion with the auditor. I have provided the auditor the split equal that should have occurred since the General Accounting Standard Board changed the regulations in twenty eleven. That also had a discussion as to whether or not those are committed funds or restricted funds. Restrictive funds are those that are passed by something that you as the board cannot change, meaning a law. So, in this case, the funds going to the, what we call public safety, you can call it, police enforcement, whatever, those are restricted funds. And there's two things that separate between a committed and a restricted. Committed means you can change the use of that fund if you so choose. Restricted means you cannot. We know it's a restricted fund. Committed means that the beginning of the year, regardless of whether or not you went over the allotted amount that you gained in the sales tax, your amount becomes zero. Restricted means that your revenues and your expenditures are compared and they are followed forward each year. So, from twenty eleven up to twenty twenty-four, that fund has a negative balance of over a million dollars. And that is incurred because of when the town was using Saint Tammany Parish as their law enforcement. So, all those negative years of when we spent more than what we collected in sales tax continues to accumulate. Now, the last few years since we did move over to Marshall, there has been a surplus reducing that negative amount from prior years. But the auditor is working with LLA to determine whether or not they simply put a footnote in the twenty twenty-four audit report or if they have to go back in and redo, but they have the fifty fifty split between the general fund and the law enforcement fund. They have the expenditures and they have that amount carrying forward from twenty eleven.
So, it appears that the general fund has been subsidizing law enforcement for many, many years and it's upside down at this point because law enforcement has spent substantially more than what the sales tax has brought in over a period of years.
Well, not...
Can I say something?
Under, under, under prior administration, it was twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a month they were paying to the sheriff's office to run it, so it may have been over what was being collected in sales tax and apparently it was funded through the general fund. But then if you read the process verbal, and I've gotten two different copies, so I'm not sure which one, and we're trying to get the original, it says that what is born of the law enforcement, it doesn't say fifty percent, but all of our audits back to twenty twelve say fifty percent.
Yes, sir, they're working on getting that corrected.
Wait, wait, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
That twenty eleven law states specific towns that where they changed that eighty-three law, but there's also a section in it that says that the law does not apply to those towns that aren't talked, aren't spoken about. And so, we have still the eighty-three law in effect.
We do.
We don't go to that two eleven, twenty eleven.
But the twenty eleven was a change in accounting procedures. It was, it's called, they refer to it as GASP. It's government accounting procedures, so they were just providing direction on how the accounting was to take place. And that's one of the reasons that they had us go all the way back to two thousand and eleven and substantiate that we were spending those monies appropriately.
Wait, that, that law only states certain specific towns for that. It doesn't, and it says specifically that the towns, it doesn't affect any other laws previous to that and we're not named in those towns.
I'm not sure what law you're referring to.
I think we'll have to go back and refer that back to the auditor and let the auditor determine. They came to us and said the twenty eleven law applied to us and so the discussion became whether or not this was a committed or a restricted fund.
Well, it's dedicated, it's not restricted, they call it dedicated.
It's restricted.
It's, it's restricted. Dedicated or...
Committed.
Or committed are two interchangeable words.
But my, my concern is though...
That would be a fund that you could dedicate money but then decide later on to not dedicate money. In this case, it's a measure passed by the voters, it's restricted, you cannot change that, I cannot change that, it is what it is.
So, is your concern that the law enforcement department is being underfunded currently? That they don't have adequate...
No, because since twenty nineteen, since we canceled the contract, and I haven't done the numbers yet from twenty nineteen, but for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, the law enforcement was not getting its share and you guys weren't aware of this until recent communications with LLA and your auditor. So, somehow, all those funds and positions that were created, were created because we thought we had surplus money and in reality, we didn't. Law enforcement had surplus money.
Well, not if you consider the fact that they were at a deficit prior to that.
Right, well, you, you can't steal from law enforcement.
We stole from the general fund, if you want to call it stealing, so sewer and...
You can't reallocate funds that are dedicated in a tax without going back to the voters.
That's correct.
So, if we reallocated them to the general fund without approval...
I guess it's semantics, it's not reallocated.
It is, it is acceptable...
No, I'm, no, I'm talking about from twenty nineteen forward.
It is acceptable for the police department to have their revenue and expenditures within the general fund. The auditor is then responsible for separating those into special tax funds within the financial statements.
Right.
So, it is acceptable for us to cover...
It could be in the general fund, what I'm saying though, hold on, it wasn't used for law enforcement.
Yes, sir, it was.
A portion of it was, not fifty percent.
Maybe we could talk about this.
Not in the most recent year, years.
In the last six years since this administration took over.
I, I went back to twenty eleven and I took the total sales tax generated from the one percent that was passed in nineteen eighty-three and I separated that in a spreadsheet, fifty percent to general fund, fifty percent to police fund. Then from the exact same audit reports that you're looking at, I pulled in the police expenditures that were noted in that audit and compared those revenues to those expenditures. And unfortunately, in the years that we had Saint Tammany Parish, we grew a very large deficit in that restricted fund, meaning that the general fund tax was actually paying for the law enforcement at that time. I agree with you that since we went to the marshal, we've had a surplus, but the surplus has not been large enough to overcome the deficit in that fund from prior years. Eventually, it will if we keep on track and we keep our police-public safety equal and make sure we're not overspending, eventually, it will erode that deficit in that fund. But right now, the way the auditor and the discussions we've had, there will be a footnote in the twenty twenty-four or a complete change to the reports that they send out that will show that tax being equally split and will have the accumulated total of that fund from twenty eleven to the end of twenty twenty-four.
So, you're saying the deficit that was created in the prior administrations approved by the board, did they not know that they were only, had a certain amount of money when I checked?
I really can't speak to the past when it comes to how those things...
All that I can tell you, starting January first, twenty twenty-five, we have absolutely split that tax in our accounting. It may not have been in the audit in twenty twenty-four, but in twenty twenty-five, our financial statements clearly show that we are splitting that sales tax, fifty percent to the general fund expenditures and fifty percent to the...
Those numbers matched.
Right, correct. And if you will notice in the budget amendment, the expenditures allocated for the public service match the revenue we expect from the public service.
All right, since you didn't know any of this until the last two weeks, how have they been taking the money? So, no one knew this, no one in this administration knew this prior to two weeks ago.
Knew what?
About the deficit from twenty eleven back and everything else.
Well, we did because we've been doing it right since twenty twenty-five. We did not realize that the auditor did not recognize that as a restricted fund.
When, when did you guys become aware that it was a deficit back in prior administration? Because you've only been here a year and a half.
Auditor asked me to go back to twenty eleven and split the sales tax between the two different...
When was that?
This week.
This week? Okay, that's what I'm saying, all this is new. So, prior to that, what I'm saying is from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four, no one administration up until two weeks ago knew this was going on. So, what they would, they didn't know about this deficit. You just figured this was just brought to my attention and your attention the last two weeks.
Well, we don't know if, if Janet Dufresne may have known about this and was aware of the fact that there was a deficit.
I question that as well, but a good point. So, that whole time though, we've been taking this fund and putting it into general fund and not sharing it fifty fifty, not knowing that there was a deficit, okay? Take the deficit out of your mind for a second. What we did though, with that, those extra monies, and sometimes it's eighty percent general fund, twenty percent law enforcement, seventy, I'll go through, we're putting that money into the general fund allowed us to create positions that we should have never created because they were improperly funded.
Well, creating the positions of the marshal and the deputy marshals...
No, 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 throughout town hall.
I'm sorry, you're questioning that we hired administrative staff?
We didn't have the funding for it because no one knew that it was dedicated for law enforcement.
Okay.
So...
So, when you go budget actual, could we, I mean, is this something that maybe we should discuss at the office?
This is, this is something that needs to be not here tonight.
I mean, I, I think that it's a good thing to raise, but when we get into the details...
Until we have all the information from the auditors and you could sit in on that and have that conversation.
But I'm the one that initiated this, I know it's...
I understand you initiated it.
All right, so if we could change that title in this as well and then...
So, your objection to public safety and, I'm sorry, I want to get it...
Judicial review.
So, public safety and judicial review is that it should read...
Police fund.
Police fund.
Police fund.
Okay.
I have no problem, I thought public safety and judicial was a little bit more descriptive, accurate of what's going, goes on because part of the police department is the clerk of court, which is the judicial department, and that seems to kind of in past have been looked over. But if, if the, if your recommendation is to go back to police fund, I have no problem with that.
Or you could just put police fund in parentheses, either way, like I don't, I'm not against there being more descriptive, whatever, I mean...
And then we'll leave all the grant stuff in there for now just for this amendment.
Yes, sir, we left it in there again for the purpose of we are in the, nearing the end of twenty twenty-five, that would be a pretty substantial change to make that capital project fund and then, because when you make a new fund, you now need to make new accounts to associate with that fund, and I'm talking about bank accounts, and then move that money physically from a bank account under whatever fund it's currently under, which would be the utility fund, to the capital project fund. We just felt like that would be better suited to begin in twenty twenty-six and have that hard deadline.
Any shells on board with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
As far as the other document that you guys have in front of you, the two thousand and four payoff of that debt obligation, we've talked about that a little bit in the past and I wanted to find out, the, we learned from the bond attorney that it is a callable loan, so there's no penalty and there's no issue with us paying that off. And, and there are a number of bullet points on that page to show what the benefits of paying that off. I think you've already kind of expressed that you supported this and I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, it might help us with the bond attorney's calculations, you know, to...
That debt to income.
...of the loan, so I'm kind of, I don't like to pay things off, I like to stretch it out, but yeah, it saves you eight thousand interest and helps with, with getting the loans and whatnot might help, so...
And Leon, don't we have approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars in that account?
I thought that was the case, that was what it was supposed to be funded, but we do have the money available in the contingency and reserve funds and he said that those funds were available to us.
So, we have a hundred and nine thousand on hand?
Yes.
I agree, I think it's a good idea to pay it off. It puts us in a better position to get the next loan, which we have already applied for.
Okay.
I wanted to step back one second to the Ponchatrain Basin Foundation application because you said there was a deadline associated with that.
October thirty first.
Is that something that would go into this amendment? What, I mean, how do we assume how much money would be?
So, I don't think that our matching funds would be, I think that would be something we'd have to consider for twenty twenty-six and I'm, I'm really glad that you brought that up, Regan, because the grant application itself, the drafting of that application can, you know, run around ten thousand dollars. So, yeah, that's generally when you put everything together.
Do we even have time to do that before October thirty first?
It, it would be pushing it, but yeah.
And who would do that for ten thousand dollars?
That would be the town engineer.
Okay.
So, he said it would, it should be less than ten thousand dollars, so I didn't want, what's that?
I would hope so.
Yeah, but I'd rather say ten and have it be less than him come, come in with it being higher than that. There's also a drainage study and, and you may be familiar with this, Regan, going on in the parish right now?
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Baker, I believe, is involved in that. And if there's any time for us to be involved in putting ours together and talking about what we need to do moving forward, I think it should be in coordination with the parish because we are not an island unto ourselves.
I agree and they have a lot more data and a lot more, you know, the Bitter River doesn't know whether it's in town...
Limits are...
...or not, right? So, I, I definitely think that we should coordinate with the parish and I kind of feel like we should check in with the parish before we decide whether or not we're going to do our own separate study.
Like safe streets.
Yeah, because, you know, and it might be something we should also talk to the Regional Planning Commission about, because I think, especially with something as big as drainage, it makes more sense to look at it on a regional basis.
More broadly, right.
Yeah.
So, is there anything that you guys have reviewed in this, in these sheets that Donette has provided, the explanations and everything that you take exception to or that you object to or that you want to see removed? And I know we had talked about, and I think Mr. Blitch is still here, we had talked about the traffic circle at one point and that there would be a discussion about the traffic circle before any, that, that we proceeded to doing anything when it came to the traffic circle. Ashner is working on their facility over there. I had gotten an estimate some time ago that was a hundred and forty thousand dollars to install the, the concrete and the brickwork and all of the plantings around the circle in order to put the statue in the center of the circle and I know that there was... And I know that there was some objection to that, that a number of the aldermen have had voiced. But the Ashner folks doing what they're doing at their facility provided a quote for installing the foundation for it. And Mr. Blitch, would you be willing to address that? Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ron Blitch from Abita. Over two years ago, that statue was brought in here, and the Blitch Family Foundation announced that we were donating this statue, which was 12 feet high. And it was designed and fabricated in Florence, Italy by the same artist that did the princess statue that's under the pavilion in the park. It was presented here. It was budgeted for, I think, $30,000. We had an estimate from Andre Mono of about between $30,000 and $40,000 for it. That money was not spent. And as Leanne mentioned, we did get an estimate through the town. They put it out for public bid, and the estimate was $150,000, which I knew and Andre knew was crazy. We bid it again to take advantage of the level of bourbon project because you had concrete people here. And the price came in at about 55. And much, much better number. And but nothing moved forward. And now, working with the concrete contractor for the Ashner project, the price is now 28. And so... And they're very interested in helping the town, very interested in working with the town. And that would give the base, the heavy lifting work of all the concrete that's necessary to hold up a statue that large in the circle. And then we'll work on other grants and avenues to do the landscaping project that Sandra's already working on to get that funded and to get all the other pieces and parts taken care of. So it's my hope and the Blitch family's hope that this can finally move forward because it's two years. And it's just, it's a long time to have that thing sitting in a crate in the barn at the town. So we would hope that the money's in the budget right now. I think $80,000 is in the budget currently. And we think we can do the concrete work, et cetera, for 28. And we'll find the money or the foundation will fund it if there's any differences or overheads, overruns in that part. But finally, please, let's just get this thing moving.
How much has been taken out of that? Or has any?
Zero.
There's been about $2,000 spent on...
Of the $80,000, was any of that subtracted out in the amendment?
No, sir.
Okay. We got plenty of money?
Yeah. And we think it can be done. We got a contractor. The reason is 28. It's a very good contractor. He wants to help the town, and he's pouring concrete right now. We have all the drawings done, ready to go that Andre Mono did at the town engineer at a great discount to help the town. Everything's ready to go.
How long would it take to get the demolition of what's in that circle out so we can move forward with this?
Well, that... Yeah.
Demo can be really quick, but...
Demo's the easy part. Yeah, we'll make sure it happens. I mean, Andre wants it to happen. We'll help. I'm an architect. We can do help. Ashner wants to be a good neighbor for Abita. So we just say this is an opportunity to do something good for the town, have something positive for the town that could be, you know, a symbol of our town.
You're saying they're pouring concrete now?
They've got parking lots to do as well and everything else.
They'll be there for months to come.
They've got lots of concrete.
They'll be there for months to come.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They've got a lot of concrete all the way till the end. That's a year-long project.
Okay.
And I know there were some comments at the last public hearings about appropriating the Indian culture. Chakta descendants from Abita have already said they're thrilled and excited to have this represent them. This isn't... We're not going to have protest signs out there like DC. We're not going to need the National Guard to protect the site. Unless... Well, no. Stu will be nice.
Can I ask a basic question? Which direction will the Indian be facing?
What we're thinking is that... We're thinking that her hands would be outstretched, and water is going to... A little bit of water is going to drip from those hands into a pool that will hold it and recirculate. And the... Is that what this spell was for? And we're thinking that it would pretty much... How to describe it? It might sort of face the trace, sort of face the pavilion. So you see it coming in town from 59, and you see it going down the... Is that Holly Street in front of the church? No. What's the street from the church? Maple. You see it from those, and you'd see the back of the statue coming up 36 from the fire station.
Okay.
And the hope was also, and one of Dan's suggestions was, and I think it makes sense. Sandra's got a beautiful drawing of the layout that will have dwarf palmettoes around it, which are maintenance-free and will not get huge. And pink muley on the outside. So we won't have to... Won't be worried about roses and everything else. These things are industrial plants.
And, yeah, all the soil, get rid of that horrible torpedo grass that's in there.
We can work closely with her and get the money raised to do that. All of that work is estimated for about $10,000?
Yeah, new soil, about two feet of new soil, all of the planting and pipe straw, it's about $10K. And then keep it beautiful. Yarn club and bracing money, $5 at a time. But it's a long ways to go. So any help we can get would be much appreciated.
We only have expenditures right now of $38,000. So we have more than enough. You're 28, she's 10.
Exactly.
So...
And we have sources and we have other ways to get the rest of it taken care of.
Your budget is $80,000 right now.
But we don't need that.
Okay.
That was a placeholder until we got this bid, which just happened a week ago, working with Ashner. And we've got other ways to dedicate... We could dedicate the All Plain Air Funds for next year, which is always $3,000 or $4,000. We could dedicate the next 10 years to help subsidize it because that's a museum function.
Can we make a...
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we make a resolution right now? Can we do that on the spot?
You just have to reduce the budget you already have.
We can do it. It's already in the budget.
The budget is approved.
Everybody was on board.
It was. It was.
Yeah, so we're having a discussion about...
I remember agreeing to the $30,000 two years ago.
Right. But when it went to $80,000, there was indigestion about, okay, we've got a lot of problems that we're trying to solve for the residents of this town. And do we need to spend $80,000 on a beautiful statue? But a statue. So I agree that if we can do it for, you know, much less, half that, and it appears that that's the projection you're going with. Back to this discussion of the budget, would this be... Need to be an amendment to bring it to a lesser amount? Or how does that work? It's not... It doesn't trigger the 5%, so we don't have to amend it.
So it's in streets... Or it's in public works. So in public work, we were just talking about potentially needing some funding to do the grant.
Rather do this than that. I'd rather have the statue than the grant.
Well, wait a minute. The grant is for drainage study for the entire town, which is the subject of every meeting we have here is drainage. So, right, we might be able to get both. All I'm saying is, I'm not objecting to it, but let's not spend $80,000 on it. And that sounds like we're in agreement.
Yeah, I don't know where the 80 came from. Because Andre's estimate was always 30 to 50. And he was right. So but we also have a great opportunity. We have to get it done quickly while the contractor's still here. So...
We should be able to get this completed for $60,000.
Oh, yeah. And the goal is to have it done before the end of the year.
Yes.
We don't need a resolution.
No, it's already in the budget. No, and thank...
Agreed.
Yeah. Thank you, Ron, for keep fighting for this and getting a better deal.
I didn't finish one last comment for Regan, that what happens to the rear of the statue. Dan's idea, and we have to study this with Sandra's group, maybe we plant cypresses behind it as if it's in the woods because she's standing in the stump where the water originally came out in the legend. Well, you know, when the roundabout was done, I worked with Louis with the state on that, they wouldn't allow us to put an oak tree in it because no one's going to distract everybody. If you go down 59 and seeing the oak trees and the one in La Combe, which is covered with trees, somehow that's... I think we might have to let them know, but I think we'll be fine.
I think it depends on what type of curb. You know, if it's a rollover curb...
Might have to talk to a landscape architect.
Stand-up curb, they allow it.
Might have to talk to a landscape architect.
Actually, I've worked with the elders, and they have given us some advice, and they really are interested in being involved. And they did a big presentation. And I think they worked with the same funding that we tried to pay through people we know and people. And he said that if we can plant materials in there that are really going to reduce the maintenance dramatic hole and really fill in there. I mean, there's still some watering issues and so...
And we have other resources for getting the plant materials. Craig Hewen, who owns Full Moon, is very interested in helping. And there are commercial nurseries up in the Folsom that we can contact. So the planning, we may be able to get that down. But we have a bid in writing that Leanne has of $28,000 for the concrete work.
And we want to keep the magnets to a minimum. Our public works guys have plenty enough to do. So whatever we can do when it comes to the planning in that circle to minimize longer maintenance.
And we'll get rid of that crate in the barnyard for the town that's as big as this stage that is sitting in right now.
And we'll put in a bigger gate.
Yeah, yeah.
The only gate that's there is a four-foot gate that...
Just don't get five-foot plants.
Well, don't even fit your machinery, you know? It's going to have a good cost.
But I have dwarf palmettoes in my house, absolutely indestructible. They don't get higher than this. And they're drought and everything.
That's kind of why we did the...
No, it's... Have you shown everybody that sketch you did? It's beautiful. Okay. That's our goal. Okay. Thank you.
So the last thing I want to mention on the proposed amendment and the budget is we do have a calendar. I kind of shared that tentative calendar with y'all.